Roland, we are officially open for business for this special school board session at WEB.
Alright, well, thank you for coming to WEB. It's a little warm up here. Our building gets a little hot when it gets warm outside, so I apologize for that. But, welcome to WEB Elementary. We kind of have the theme this year that great happens here. We're a small school, but we're really proud of what we're doing here and how our staff really makes learning engaging and fun for students. So, we just have some highlights that we want to talk about, about some changes that we've made this year, and then some traditions that we've kept. And I know I talked about this a little bit at the board meeting. And we'll go on a tour, so you'll get to see everything. And then, kind of where we're headed and what our direction is. And that's going to touch base with the literacy cadre and some of the changes that were made into Tier 1 and Tier 2 instruction. So, I will also introduce our literacy coach. This is Emily Flack, and so she's our literacy coach that peers and partners with the cadre. So, she'll kind of touch base on that Tier 1 and Tier 2 instruction with us as well. I did want to highlight our new landscaping that we had done this fall. It's looking good. We had a generous donation on that. And so, some of the new initiatives this year that we started are building upon the CHAMP's PBIS. So, when Cole was here, he kind of introduced that CHAMP's model, and we read that book together as a staff. And now, we're kind of upping that game. And one thing we've noticed is, we weren't really hitting the positive piece of it. We were implementing those routines and those procedures, but we weren't really hitting the positive. And one thing that we talked about as a staff is that we have these kids in this building who do it right all the time. What are we doing to really congratulate them and recognize them? And so, we implemented spider cards and classroom webs. And so, when you go on our tour, you'll see, and I have a picture of it, they have a big wheel in our office. And so, as soon as kids fill out their 10 spider cards for doing it the web way, they get to spin the wheel of prizes. And all the prizes are donated from families or local businesses. So, we try to keep it fresh. They also have classroom webs. So, when we go on our tour, you'll see, they have little spider webs outside their room, and they earn spiders as a class. So, the big thing on that is they can't earn it from their own teacher. It has to be from another adult in the building. So, if they're caught doing it well in the hallway, or a staffer walks in and the class is working hard, they earn a spider. And for each level of spiders, there's a different prize. So, this past week, when it was so nice out, they had principal surprise, and they got popsicles this classes. We have some next week that get to watch a movie during lunch, things like that. So, we try to up the ante each time, but they really look forward to that. And we've seen a huge increase in just positive behavior as a classroom. And we also did monthly recognition programs. I'll actually walk through there. So, there's our prize wheel. And this was our acting principal for the day. So, he got to give the prizes. And then, like I said, we have the Caught in the Web and the different level prizes, so those were put their way up. But it's exciting to see. We also have a tracker, so we know if we aren't hitting a class. We try to really make sure that we're hitting a class, so that we keep that momentum going. Monthly student recognition programs. We started doing Student of the Month a couple of years ago, but we never actually had a convocation and recognized students. And so, we really tried to have a theme or an activity that makes it fun each month. So, if you look through, I always say, check us out on Facebook. That sounds so cliched, but we have a really good Facebook page that shows. So, we do it at the end of the month. So, Halloween, we all were dressed up. And our staff Halloween costume was Mario, because of the new movie that had come out. And so, we actually did a Mario Kart race of staff around the students in the gym, and it was super fun. But we tried to have a theme for each one, and we recognized students. We also do honor roll certificates, and we are getting prizes from local businesses to honor those students. So, this McHalester sponsored our last one. They got a free kids meal when they won. And then, they get to have their fun picture here in our little frame, and they get a monthly lunch with their principal. And you'll see that it's the sleigh downstairs as well. But we've seen a lot of positive improvement. And one thing that we really actually liked about the convocations each month is that we were having issues with behavior in convocations, because we would have them with guests maybe once every four months, and then our kids didn't know how to act. So, having them each month, we've really been able to set those expectations. So, when we have guests enter the building, we get a lot of compliments on how well they're behaving. So, it was kind of a double leaning for us. One thing I'm super excited about is that we have partnered with our tech department, and we have streamlined our behavior log process. So, we were missing a lot of discipline being tracked in power of school. And this was something I knew from when I was at PBIS, is we were getting all these web students, and they were like, well, they've never had any problems. They had a clean record. I was like, ooh, I taught that kid two years ago. I don't know about that. So, we really wanted to make sure that our process was consistent with the other elementaries. And so, I worked with Doug Kirby, and we rolled out a form very similar to what Northwood has. So, our teachers have a form that they fill out for discipline, and it goes all the way from viewing baseline, you know, they were running in the bathrooms or the halls, to kind of our highest offenses. And it will go straight to us, and we have a dashboard, but it automatically generates this nice letter to parents. And we do some at home, and they have to sign off on that. So, it's just that additional communication with them, and we really like that. And we also then have a dashboard that we're actually able to track our highest offenders. It ranks them each month. And we always say, we don't really want them on that top 10, but we do have a top 10, but it's allowing us as kind of a penetration team. So, with our counselor and our behavior interventionist, we sit down and we look at that data. It also groups it by category where it's happening. So, then we know where we need to kind of target our CHAMP's behavior. Is it in specials? Is it in the hallway? And we're really kind of using that data to drive it. We didn't have that data before, so we didn't know where to target our interventions. And so, now we do. So, that has been amazing, and it's also consistent. Teachers and parents know what to expect K through 4 for discipline. So, thank you to IT and, you know what, because that makes our life so much easier.
That's a good one.
So, traditions that continue. We have a very strong PTO. We are small, but we are mighty, and we have an amazing event. Our after-school club participation is very high. We are a Title 1 school, so we do do our literacy events. We're actually getting ready to host one next week for Books for Bingo. And we're really trying to continue that staff morale. We have 15 to 18 certified staff members. So, when you think about bringing us all together, four of them or three of them leave the building half day. So, we really have to be creative in how we bring each other together. And so, our PTO has one or two family-themed events. This year, we switched Chili and Chills to Spider Fest. If you've ever heard about Chili and Chills, we have a haunted hallway. We have a sensory hallway. It's a pretty big event. We didn't have Chili this year due to rising costs, so we changed it to Spider Fest. But we added a lot of fun things, and this is where we bring in that community involvement. So, we had community members. This is what I care. We had different trunk or treating, so we moved our event outside for part of it and really spaced out the event. Mr. Pearlie over at Needham was gracious enough to drive a tractor around for hayrides for us. So, we had some outdoor events, and then we continued our traditions of the inside. But it's really a big PTO event for us. We have mother and son events, so you'll see the daddy-daughter event. So, you'll see, we just had our daddy-daughter dance. Our mother and son event is coming up in April, and we have different themes for those each year. And then, this is from our Walk-a-thon, which is our biggest fundraiser. PTO really helps us out in buying supplies. They just bought us some additional math supplies. They really take care of our staff. So, this year, we partnered together, and they snack our lounge every month with treats and drinks, because treats bring people happy in a very stressful profession. So, you'll see the different baskets and treats are over here. They bought us a nugget ice machine maker, because we didn't have ice upstairs. So, they really do take care of us, and we try to partner with them. So, actually, next week, when we have our Title 1 event, we partnered it right in front of our PTO meeting to try to bring in that partnership and try to bring a few more parents into PTO. So, very, very strong PTO, and we appreciate that. Our after-school club traditions are still going. We have a lot of clubs for a small school, and it's amazing. So, Helping Hands is a club that works on service projects. They actually just hosted a bus appreciation breakfast for our bus drivers, and they put it on all themselves, and they served them breakfast, and it was really cool to see. Drama Club, if you watch our Facebook page, we just had Peter Pan performance. And that is, what's cool about our Drama Club is it's all 3rd and 4th graders putting on this play. And so, we had some obstacles this year with the change in staffing, but we made it happen, and it is so cool to see just kids in a different light. And what we love about Drama Club is it brings our athletes in. It brings our academic students. Everybody's on Drama Club. And the performances for 3rd and 4th grade guys, they're pretty, they're pretty top-notch. So, if you haven't been to one, I believe next year we're doing Willy Wonka, so we invite you to go. We have math-able, science-able, spelling. Mrs. Bridges has implemented a building in the Zion Club for that kind of STEM idea, and art club. And we are lucky enough as a school to partner with the Rotary, so we have five students who go to Rotary about every month. We actually just went to lunch on Tuesday with them, and they get to interact with adults and really see what it's like to be a part of the community, and we love that. And then, we have choir, which our choir is amazing. Mr. Swigert was here this morning. He puts on a tremendous program for winter, and he also does a wonderful Veterans Day program. We actually got, we got a lot of compliments from our community members on that. But he has been able to get us to perform at the Pacers game. This is the second year in a row. And so, they just sang at the Pacers game. Was it, I think, last week? Was it last week? Yeah. With Union. And it is amazing to see them on that platform and that stage, and they rocked it. I think there was a huge ovation from the crowd. It was really cool. Title 1 reading nights, Dr. C himself delivering books. And so, our first semester Title 1 reading night, we had 850s Drive-In. And so, all of our staff members who helped out on that dressed up in 50s gear and delivered books and moved their floats and popcorn to our families. And so, a lot of our families, it was beautiful out. Sat in the back of their trucks, took chairs out and things like that, and we delivered books, and they were reading different books together. They would flash their lights when they won a new book. It was a really fun event. So, we are glad to bring that one back. And then, next week, we are doing Bingo for Books with our Title 1 night. And we are also partnering up with Book Taco, which is our replacement for reading counts, so the comprehension assessments. So, we're having a taco bar, and we're going to introduce Book Taco. And all the books that students read or get at their event, they will then be taught how to use Book Taco to take those quizzes and get points. And we've partnered with our PTO that our top two readers in each classroom this year will get to go to Rascal's for a special field trip. So, we're really trying to push that independent reading, because that's one area that we're seeing declining right now. So, very fun, very cool. Behavior logs and data staff morale boosters. So, we're doing weekly staff shout-outs. We have put our staff shout-outs here. So, we have an actual Google form that a staff member has to nominate another staff member for a shout-out. And we love that, because it's not just coming from me. It's not just coming from the same person every time, but it's really coming from their peers and their colleagues. So, every week, we put those into our newsletters that we send out, and then I put those over here on the wall. And at our monthly staff meeting, we do, we read them all, we put them in a basket, and then we draw two for a prize. So, it's pretty fun and exciting for them. We do monthly pigeons or catering lunch to try to continue that camaraderie. And we love this new space that we have, because you can actually eat together. So, we usually, we used to have pigeons in the back hallway. We still put some down there, but having it up here is a better space for us, because you actually have a place to sit and interact with each other, because we don't always get that. So, next week, we are bringing Subway boss lunches in for everyone to kind of push through until spring break, and then we'll go back to a pigeon for April and May. We do monthly DoorDash orders. We're going to start implementing that, so every, the final Friday of the month, you'll get a DoorDash order that you can do. We've always had a staff breakfast, which we did continue this year. Our PTO comes back for us. We all get to come together, and they actually provide coverage for students doing interactive Christmas crafts and things like that, so that we actually all can sit together, because that's very rare. But we decided this year that we needed an off-site holiday party to really enjoy each other and see each other. And so, our social committee gave that, and we had a blast. We had, I think, all but four staff members or five staff members in. It was a huge turnout, which we have not done it in a long time, and it was, it was a lot of fun. Karaoke, dinner, games. So, that's one thing that in our survey from staff in January was like, please don't get rid of that. So, that was a really big booster for us, and it's something that we're thinking about trying to also look at during an end-of-the-year, like, weekend celebration. And then, we have themed staff meetings. We try to incorporate those into some lulls of the year when we have PD or things like that, staff meetings that we kind of start with that, to kind of give a game or a prize. So, next week, they don't know it, but we're going to go on an Easter egg hunt to start PLCs. We try to give them different, and then different prizes and that free coverage and things like that, so. Oh, and there's our Halloween costumes, if you missed it. Okay, so where are we headed? This is where we get really needy. We have a lot of fun things going on, but we have some work to do. We need to have continued improvements into our Tier 1 instruction. We have to revamp our Tier 2 instruction, because we are not closing the gaps in some of our students. We do want to continue our PBIS model, but we want to kind of start relinquishing control to students. We want that to be student-led. We want students to be reaching out, writing letters to community members to get donations and things like that. And then, we really want to add student growth recognition. We have those nine-week rewards and honor roll, but we really need to also be recognizing those kids who maybe didn't make A.B. honor roll, but they grew 100 points this year. Like, that's, they need that recognition. So, we're looking at how to do that as well. But our biggest one is going to be our Tier 1 instruction and our Tier 2 interventions, because that's what's targeting kids. That's what's getting them to grow. So, we just got our I-Rate results back. We're at about 75% of our entire 3rd grade level passing with last year's test and then this year's test. But we still have 14 students who did not pass. And while some of those have IEPs and they have that Good Cause Extension that we can use, we sat and talked, Emily and I, that's great, but we still have 14 kids who can't read, right? So, what are we going to do? And so, that's kind of where the literacy cadre comes in and the changes that we're doing. One thing that is exciting for us is our 2nd graders were at about a 48%, 49% pass rate already. So, we've got half of that grade level almost already passing where they need to be in 3rd grade for that assessment. So, that gives us who we need to target in 2nd grade to not have that problem in 3rd grade. But what are we going to do when these kids move on to 4th grade who still can't read? That's where we're at. So, they will retake that assessment in May, but we kind of have to really target, what are we going to do in the next two months? And two months sounds like a long time, but when you look at instructional days, it's about 16 instructional days to close about a year and a half gap. So, really, what are we going to do? And so, we've kind of tied into the literacy cadre. We've changed a lot of what we're doing this year, and we think next year, starting there, is going to make huge impacts. But what do we do now? And so, we're using what we call encoding assessments. So, you may, you may hear DIBELS a lot, and DIBELS are middle-of-the-year, beginning-of-the-year, middle-of-the-year, end-of-the-year assessments. Those are great, but they don't give us a lot of information, except they're where they need to be or they're not. It doesn't tell us where to close gaps. And so, thankfully, Emily has kind of come up with an encoding assessment that really targets exactly where kids are not proficient. We can tell you basically K through 4 what sounds in letters and knowledge every kid in this building has and where their gaps are. So, if you want to talk about a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah. So, through my work with the literacy cadre and the training that I've received, we were finding that DIBELS gives us a lot of information, but it doesn't help us hone in on exactly where the problem is. We know that we have students who can read 30 words in a minute, and we know we have students who can read 40 words in a minute. And while that might seem like a big difference, it's not telling us where exactly those gaps are. They can read. They're slow at it, but why is that happening? So, the encoding assessment is given to entire classes, and they hear a sound, and they have to write the letter that says that sound. And while that is a more challenging skill, if they're able to do that, then we know that they can read it, because they can produce the harder skill. So, we've been working on our Tier 2 interventions. In the past, when students get pulled for title, they get something different than what they were receiving in the classroom, because up until this year, the thought has always been, if they're not understanding it in the classroom, then let's try it a different way. But what we have found, or what we've learned through the cadre and through research, is that really, we're just giving them more cognitive load, so that they can't understand. They're hearing it one way in the classroom, and then they're hearing something completely different outside of the classroom. So, then, when they come back in the classroom, they're not putting those things together. So, what we're doing in Tier 2 is doing the same thing that we're doing in the classroom out of the classroom in a smaller group. So, they're hearing the same thing twice. And in 1st grade, at the beginning of the year, to kind of catch some of those gaps, we were pre-teaching in Title 1. The Title 1 teachers were doing the Horton Gillingham lesson that they would be getting later that afternoon, and then they would get it a second time in the afternoon. And those kids who would typically just kind of sit quietly were raising their hands and participating and wanting to read, because they were like, oh, I know this. We just did this. I got it, which has been really exciting. And like Carolyn said, talking about our students who didn't pass I-Rate and kind of coming up with a plan for them, the last four days, every day this year, I've been getting updated data from those 3rd graders. Another thing that we've learned from the cadre is that typically, 80% of students who are reading below grade level in 3rd grade have phonological awareness deficit. And that's something that I have been guilty of as a teacher, too. You think about that a lot in kindergarten, in 1st grade, writing and beginning sounds and middle sounds, but when you get those multi-syllable words, and you don't have that to be able to break those words apart, it's nearly impossible to read those words. And then, to answer questions about words that you can't read, that's why we have so many students who don't pass state exams. So, I did a phonological awareness assessment with them, and some of the results were shocking, I guess. We did still have some, a couple of 3rd grade students who were unsure of syllables and hearing a word like sunset. And we said, take away sun, what's left? We know it's set, but a lot of our, we had several students who weren't even able to do that. And so, we've kind of come up with a plan during that Tier 1 instruction, which is students getting exactly what they need on their level. We're going to take them and do something on their level, rather than them sit through a 3rd grade lesson. So, we're going to be doing 45 minutes. We're going to start with phonological awareness in different points, because they're all kind of at different spots, and then digging into those encoding scores, giving them the Horton Gillingham lesson based on the skills that they need, and then digging into the decodable passages that go along with it, so that they can really apply those things. So, I'm excited to see how that goes.
And then, on top of that, those 13 students or 14 students have been invited to an additional intervention after school, two days a week, starting in April, all the way up until they do that retake. So, I called all parents and invited them to the English. So, we're hoping, hoping to get those guys. One thing with the science of reading, we've also really tackled, is weekly PD. So, in the past, we've kind of gone through PLCs as just a collaboration and working through data. So, we're blessed in the elementary realm to have a really long PLC time. And so, what we've done is we use the first 30 minutes for professional development. And so, we do a three-week model rotation here. So, we do a Tier 1 week of PD, a Tier 2 week of PD, and then an assessment week of PD. Really making sure that we're taking up in all of our assessments and all of our processes are accurate and the same, so that our data is accurate and the same. So, our teachers get practice at that. So, this week, we practiced ORF, which is Oral Reading Fluency. Everybody had to actually do the assessment, and then we compared the scores to make sure that were on the same page. And then, we talked through what questions we have and things like that. So, we do that weekly. And then, that kind of drives the training that we're getting in those PDs is driving our change. So, as teachers learn more about the science of reading, as they learn more about encoding and how to use that data, it's driving our changes. So, what you'll see on our boards are our PLC goals. All of them are related to phonics instruction or OG instruction. And then, this is their cycle. And so, they're, they're tracking each week and updating their goals. And then, if their goal's finished, you'll see a note here before they change it. So, right here, like in kindergarten, their goal ends this week, but they had 60% already after two cycles. Their goal's 75%. So, we're doing check-ins on that data each, each week and really tying it to our encoding assessments, because that's where we're going to close gaps. Before, we were kind of having cycles that were three to four weeks, and they may have been with a benchmark assessment or an end-of-the-unit assessment, but that wasn't giving us the data that we needed. So, we've changed that approach. And we're changing our approach to intervention time, kind of a little bit like Emily talked, but we really try to be intentional. And one thing that we've talked about with FIT is that we sometimes use our data, but we don't, we look at our data, but we don't know how to use it and how to be intentional. So, we're still working on that process. We actually did an activity two weeks ago discussing what does FIT look like? Where are our struggles? Where are our strengths? What do we need? And that gave us a lot of great feedback that Emily and I are using to drive our future PD. Because we know, we're fixing Tier 1, and Tier 1's starting to look good, but Tier 2 is still not as intentional as we would like. So, Emily's working on a lesson plan to really help them give that structure of what, what do I need to do in Tier 2, and how does that look? And we've kind of been guilty of like, oh, well, we're working on products. I'm going to play this game. That's not being intentional. It's fun, but it's not being intentional. And so, really, we're going to work on PD on that. In our April 26, our e-learning day, we're going to have a 30-minute session on that to really work on how to post that. And that's something we've been working with the literacy cadre on as kind of our next steps, because we feel like we're getting a solid base of Tier 1, but we really got to fix what our FIT time looks like. And that's kind of us in a nutshell for this year. Any questions? Comments, concerns? Yes?
How often do your goals change? I noticed the pink box, like, by 3:21. How often do they adjust that goal?
So, it depends on how often, how their data looks. So, we try to do two-to-four-week cycles. It should never go longer than four. Ideally, it's two, especially with encoding assessments. So, this one's a little bit longer, and we're still working on getting a little bit more accurate on this one. But you'll see most of them, we're, are on two-week cycles.
Actually, 3rd grade is on weekly cycles?
Yes.
Because we've been really intentional about what we're re-teaching in those grades and tracking that data weekly. So, in lieu of a traditional spelling test, every week, they're given an encoding assessment based on the OG skill for that week, and then they adjust. So, if they have more than 60% at mastery, or 60% or more of the class at mastery, then they move on to the next skill, and they re-teach in small groups, students who didn't master it, and then move on to the next thing, the next fee. So, they're kind of a more unique grade level weekly.
3rd grade was our pilot on using the encoding assessments. We started seeing really good growth effect, so then we transitioned back to our K4. 3rd grade encoding, we obviously know that they have our largest gaps when we look at I-Rate. They came in low, so we really were targeting that prior to I-Rate. We feel like we had some good results. We have some kids who we didn't think were going to pass that did, which is great, but we still want to close that gap. But the weekly cycles have been great, because it's actually showing us that we're progressing. And that's the downside about DIBELS. If you're not doing the progress monitoring, you don't know for two to three months where they are. And so, the encoding assessment really with the weekly to two, to two-week cycles really give us input on where we need to drill students. Any questions?
How do you set the percentage? What, where you know that's going to change the, what's the schedule?
Sure. So, when we do that initial encoding assessment, we have, in our day-to-days at middle of the year, we went through and we figured out the percentage of students who mastered that skill, so we take it from there. So, what, some of the skills have like 2% mastery, so obviously, that's not, we're not going to put that at 80% right away. We might kind of break it down, especially thinking about like vowel teams, like AI, AY, AE, all of those combinations that make the same sound. Those cycles are going to be a little bit longer, and we're going to kind of break those up into chunks to make that percentage. But typically, most of the percentages of things that needed to be re-taught as a whole group were around 40%. So, we look at the individual students and thinking about where they fall in the tiers already. So, if we have a student who we already know has several gaps, is it realistic that they're going to meet that AI goal? Because AI is one of the more challenging skills. Possibly not, so we would take them out of that goal equation. But if there's a kid that we're thinking like, they're really working hard. They've made a lot of growth. We, they, we think, they can do it. They can do it for sure. So, then, we add them, and then we hope that they do.
And I would say, sometimes they look a little vague. So, like, if you're not familiar with the process, so like, we're like, they're going to move up at least one group. so like, we're just like, they're going to move up at least one group by this time. But if you think about, our groups are fluid. So as soon as they master, well, we're not keeping you in that group for another two weeks. We're immediately moving you up from Friday. Monday, you're starting a new level group based on your skill. So that's why it looks a little vague, but it's because they're so fluid that they would have to almost, you would have to have like five different goals because there's five different groups going on, maybe in first grade. There's at least five, four or five groups going on in third grade because we're meeting them in exactly where their gaps are. They look vague, but they make sense to us. Yes, we can share the tracker.
One of the things we did at Christmas, the first, second grade, they had a pretty big second grade class and then we're also doing high ability. We've all talked about that at Christy sees at first, you know how hard it is to do those cluster groupings? So we went back and added a teacher and pulled out the first and second grade high ability kids and put them together and allowed smaller classes to take place in first and second. So that's one of the things we're going to talk about in the upcoming summer retreat is should we focus smaller classes at primary with the new retention law and those things that are before us? And then let third and fourth grade or let fourth grade be a little bit bigger, hoping that they've mastered what we've talked about, that they were actually our pilots to see how it played out. Third grade here has a little bit of distress because of that same thing with two teachers and the way that high ability is set up and they have so many kids that have an IEP. There's a situation where actually the teachers even came to broke an eye and said, do you realize that there's almost half, I think it's a little over half the class has an IEP?
I think ten, ten or eleven out of twenty, period, right after.
So it's like, okay, so we, we need to look at that as well. But and they've done a good job. And we just sent Brooke and I an email about this whole goal stream on this one specifically. Because it looks, if you just drill down and you came from Mars and you looked at it, you'd be like, what, what's going on? But once you understand the journey that we're on, you know how it is. Retention is for the second grade class. Well, Hope and just signed it. So the grade two kids that do not pass I-RAID next year will not go to fourth grade without a good cause exemption. Especially like kids will still get a good cause. There's a few others, but we'll still see the kids who take.
And that's why we're hopeful that we already know that forty-eight percent of our second grade have passed. And what's really great about that data is it shows you which students are on track. That if they continue this path by third grade, they will pass. And then it gives us our, our target kids of who we really need to give extensive remediation to up until March of next year. So we have that target already and that's something that we can take at the beginning of next year and hit the ground running and really start closing those gaps.
I'm excited for that. I think that this year has really been a learning year for me. Especially this is my first year in a coaching position plus the cadre. And so it's a new school, just a lot to learn and all ready for next year and thinking like, ooh, and August.
Well, I need to learn a lot of what we learned in literacy cadre and we are applying it to Title. And because we are, we're blessed to have a Title One school and have that extra support. But it's really made us shift our thinking of what should Title look like? And what should we be doing with the systems versus the certified teacher? And how do we make it intentional? So we're kind of excited for that change that we can implement next year. If you don't have any more questions, we'll take you on a quick tour. It's very quick because we're small. And then if you'd like to, we can comment in the kindergarten class and see what OG looks like. All right, so this hallway kind of houses our specials. And so we'll have music down here in the end. And then we have our sensory room. We have amazing behavior interventionist, Mrs. Vincent. And so she has a sensory room and she's our BI. So she responds to, she's kind of our first line of defense when we have students with behavior issues. And then we have a great sensory room where she can kind of get them to kind of get out their frustrations and return to class. And we have STEM with Mrs. Barnett. And then this is our title room. So we do all of our interventions for Title Ones. I'll walk you through our library in case you haven't been in. It's cozy and fun. We're going to walk through. Good morning! This is Mrs. Wilde, our librarian. Welcome to the library. And then you can keep walking right through. Fun. She does a great job of getting new books and different materials. And she also always has a monthly display. So it might be Black History Month, different things like that. And whatever kind of is famous right now is women's history. So we have the world's famous girls. And then we do the March Madness Bracket Challenge for each grade level. Mrs. Seif is actually our new addition. So I know Dr. Clint Danning told you that we added a teacher in January. And we were lucky enough to grab Mrs. Seif from Harry and she is amazing. So she's teaching first grade, but she's upstairs because of our, our building size in a preschool. So she's our one primary teacher who's upstairs. And then this is our third and fourth grade hallway. So we have two, we have two full fourth grade classrooms. We have a three, four split that you'll see with Mrs. Commerherd. And then we have two full third grades. So we're about two and a half for third and fourth grade each. And then it circles back around to, we have our art room here with Mrs. Brown. You will see all of her artwork with our students displayed around the building. She does an amazing project with our students. And downstairs is all Dr. Seuss theme for the month of March, which goes with kind of our theme from kindergarten registration. Then we have Mrs. Slacks' literacy room. Good morning! And our refar room that houses our two special education teachers and our three special education assistants. And that is the upstairs. I did want to pop in so you guys can see all the amazing things that Mr. Swiger has gotten through grants. Our specials teachers in the mornings, because our first special's late at fifteen, they actually push into kindergarten for OG to help give that extra help. But you have to see all of his amazing things. And you'll also see why he's moved to the very end of the hallway.
The drums.
He has amazing things. But he, they love the drums. And you'll also notice he does clickers. So if you're not familiar with clickers, you hold them up and that's how you answer a question. So that's how he gets his exit tickets and for music. But amazing, if you ever have a chance to stop in when he has a music class. I know. You want to do it. I know. He has gotten a lot of amazing, a lot of amazing materials in here. Yes, he had to hold it until I-RAID was finished. So we are still Dr. Seuss out. Like I said, our kindergarten registration was Dr. Seuss themed. So we'll do lots of decorations here. We left them up so that you can enjoy it just as much as our kindergarten friends did. We have three full kindergarten classrooms this year. We usually only have two, so that was great for us. I think we were the second highest with kindergarten enrollment this past year. So we have three full teachers to our house right here. And then we'll go through, we have three preschool classrooms here. So we can go down and head this way.
So speaking of preschool, last time at registration, we closed the door fifteen minutes after we opened the door. So we are completely full with a long waiting list. So that's kind of the other journey that we're on, but you know, we talked about.
Yeah, that's exactly.
That's great.
We have a hundred and twenty that are secured in, but the waiting lasts as long as fifteen minutes.
So our kindergarten friends are in OG right now. We're going to swing by and we'll go into an OG classroom. Our preschool friends, they don't start until about eight-thirty. So you'll see some friends in here, but they are not all here yet. But if you'd like to take a quick peek inside, we can look at a preschool classroom. Do you mind if we walk through? This is one of our three preschool classrooms. It's one of our goals, our safety, those doors. You can't tell when they're up. There's Mr. Drake!
I do more in the locker rooms though.
I know.
I like the freedom to walk in and out of classrooms without like, I'm walking in and out, you know?
Good morning!
Good morning!
We're on their art table. It's that lower right there. This is our cafeteria, small but mighty. We did get new tables this year, which we're super excited about. We love them. They look great. So we're all with them, I think four years ago, by the edge, if you can remember. We also house childcare here after school and before school. Mrs. Abel is our one-two split, which was our addition in January. So she's taken the first and second grade high ability students. And that has been an amazing, amazing change for us. Students are really getting what they need in terms of that high ability curriculum. And she had a hundred percent pass rate with those students in second grade for I-RAID. So it's amazing for us. Our playground is out here. It's very wet after the rain and the storms. Mrs. Bridges is second grade. She just came back from, if you, we could pop in if you want. She just came back from PD in Hawaii for building thinking classrooms and has been implementing that with her math instruction. Okay, this is our gymnasiums and our stage. So this is our PE teacher. Again, specials don't start until eight-fifty. And our stage is used for our play performance. And then we also have our convocations in here. And it's small, but when we pull on the letrals, it's actually really fun. It's really cozy when you have everybody in the, in here in the building. But if you come for Veterans Day program or our play, it's usually standing remotely. So it's pretty fun. We like that kind of close atmosphere. So this is, we're in the middle of an OG lesson. So if you want, you guys can grab a seat if you would like. There's some tables, some chairs in the back.
Let's see, four spelling words that begin with T-R. Let me see. Quinn, give me a T-R. Truck. Everyone say truck.
Truck.
Let's see. She's going to spell truck for us. The truck is in the parking lot. Truck. Beautiful job, Quinn. Truck. Make sure you have truck. And then I need three more spelling words. T-R. Erase that and change it my little. T-R. I need three more T-R spelling words. And Charlotte. Tractor? Ooh, she's going into dangerous territory. Tractor! Let's see. Truck. Ah? Let's, ah? It's not the blend. It's not going to be the blend, sugar. It's not going to be the blend. So let's erase that. Ready? Act. And then act. Yep. And or, how do you spell that? What's that memory word? Or. At the other one. So you're going to flip that. So you're going to flip that. So this is going to be. Or. And then you're going to flip it. So it's going to be O one on the, there you go. Beautiful job. Okay, ready? Another spelling word that has T-R. Remy.
Tree.
Tree. How man spelled tree? Tree. The tractor, the truck, and the tree were all in a big yard. Tree. Double vowel. Beautiful. Tree. That's it. Perfect, girl. That's beautiful. Okay, I need one more spelling word. I have track, truck, tractor, and trees. Ian.
Traffic.
Traffic! We're getting into some big words today. Traffic. They're wanting to impress us.
I think they are.
Traffic. Make sure that, where's that T go? Where does that T go? Thank you. Ah? And then we're going to have a double consonant. And then eh? And that eh is going to be for cat. Good, oh, you already did it. Nice job. Good job. Traffic. The truck and the tra, the truck and the tractor were stuck in traffic. And that will probably happen in April, on April eighth. With a tree probably in the middle. Okay, so we have truck, tractor, tree, and traffic. All right? When you're finished with that, you'll turn your paper over and then I'm waiting for someone to tell me what our memory word was yesterday. What memory word did we introduce yesterday? Thomas. Each. Each one of you are super smart. Each. Each one of you are super smart. And who can spell each? Who can spell each? Natalie. Good job. So you're going to write each. E-A-C-H. Each. E-A-C-H. Each. E-A-C-H. Each. E-A-C-H. Each. Cover it. Write it again and check it.
We both finished with a tour of the office and the infamous fat hallway before we end our tour. So this is our office. Our SRO sits in here. And then this is our prize wheel and our, our, our prizes. So we change our wheel out whenever we run out of things or we get some new donations. And then students get to earn that time. Millie Time is a big one. We have a full list here. So and we also have a treasure box full of goodies. So that's kind of where our spider cards come from. And so this is what the spider cards look like.
That would be super cool.
And they get to say hello. All right. Last but not least.
Dr. Clint Danning needs a big pencil like that to get the kids.
There it is.
Dr. Clint Danning thinks I'm sharp.
I think maybe like valid Victorian gets that. You get the giant pencil.
I had to pull them out just to type.
Now he's notorious fat hallway. But it has been cut in half. The bridge is on the other side, but that's where all the networks of us, so we've closed it off.
Nice.
Yes. So that's our coffee bar and then we have snacks in all of our offices. And that's kind of the web. The short, shorts, but small and, small and mighty.